...
Oh, really?
So he doesn't understand the Texas ways as much as somebody who's from... So, one of my clerks was in his office wearing a blouse and... Well, I remember that being shut down. You know, it's not, you take your slushy little guy, which is a long thing to say in an office.
Yeah, it is.
And so he's a slushy, more slushy, you know, he walked through walking all over him, and then all bells, he just puts him in his pocket.
Oh, but the other one flipping out.
Took in by thirty seconds, you know, I can't even explain the difference.
We're gonna call this meeting to order, please. This is the city council regular meeting. It is November the twenty-fifth, at six P. M. at City Hall. Thank you all for coming. If y'all would please stand for the invocation and the pledge. I didn't prepare anything, but somebody, amen. Jeff, would you like to do the invocation, please?
Lord Jesus, we're grateful for this day. We're grateful for our community and our leaders and those who take the time to serve this community with Jesus. It's not an easy task. We pray for the residents of this community. We open our hearts with grace and understanding that we're not all perfect, but we do want to be good for this community as we all live here and all want to bless the community that we live in and for our kids and for the future. We want to bless the incoming council members and maybe help guide them in all things that are good for what we need to do to move forward in this community. In your precious name, we do, as we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you all. I will note that all five council members are present and accounted for. And we will go down to number three, visitors to be heard. We have one person signed up. Manny, you want to do visitors to be heard or you want to wait until... Okay. We'll go down to number four, presentation of certificates of election to the newly elected city council. That would be Ms. Deanna, Ms. Tammy, and Ms. Debbie, if y'all want to...
Showtime, ladies. If you're going to front, sit there, please. First of all, you can take these with you. If it's above the building or standing, you can leave them up in the air tonight. Now, since I'm an old man, I don't want company to save the moment to really swear, so I'm going to walk off this script. In the name and authority of the state of Texas, I, Judge Mike Powers, and present in this court, Judge of the City of Vandera, of the County of Vandera, will do solemnly execute... Raise your right hands. And we bid after me. I state your name.
I, Tammy McCabe.
Do solemnly swear affirm...
Do solemnly swear affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
...in the office of city council member.
In the office of city council member.
In the City of Vandera...
In the City of Vandera.
In the state of Texas...
In the state of Texas.
Will do the best of my ability...
And do the best of my ability.
Reserve, protect, and defend the Constitution.
Reserve, protect, and defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States and of this state.
And the laws of the United States and of this state.
So help me God.
And, so, the City of Vandera, so help me God.
Congratulations, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Everything's good, your word. Everything's good, dear.
Take care.
Are we official now?
Yes.
All right, let's go. You'll go down to C, discussion and possible action on appointing a mayor pro tem. In the past, the mayor has thrown a name out there and the council can either accept it or reject it. And at this time, I would like to offer Jeff Flowers as our mayor pro tem due to his experience on the council and his work that he's done on the FLOC program, the wastewater treatment program, all the history behind that and everything, and just the knowledge that he brings to the table. So, it's up to you guys, or you ladies, and you guys. It's just kind of a strange way to look at it all the time. But it's up to y'all. Y'all get to make the appointment of the mayor pro tem.
Um, so do we need to accept or reject Jeff for appointing him?
Yes. Are we just discussing it? Yes. Y'all's thoughts?
Um...
I was wanting, looking at Deanna, she has knowledge in the chapter codes, extensive knowledge in the chapter codes. And I mean, she's been on the EDC. She's familiar with the council and the city.
I'd like to speak in on that vote.
I don't have a selection, honestly. Because most seniority, probably gonna put my own hat in the ring, because along with that, so...
Yeah.
Outside of that, I think seniority experience on the council is beneficial.
I agree with that. Somebody needs to make a motion. Make a motion.
I make a motion that reelect Deanna as mayor pro tem.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
It should be, the motion should be appointing.
I'm sorry, appoint.
Okay. You accept that? Any other discussion? If not, all in favor? One, two, three, four. Jeff? Did you, you're not gonna vote?
No, I don't think, you go all in favor, so I'm voting no.
Okay, I got you, sorry. So, there's one nay vote by Jeff and the other four council members say yes. So, motion is approved to have Deanna McCabe as the new mayor pro tem. Okay, we'll go down to D, twenty-six, twenty-seven Board of Directors ballot for the Vandera Central Appraisal District. This is, the city gets eighty votes in this elec, this process. There are four people running for the five seats. And so, I would suggest that we divide our votes equally among the four that are running. Twenty votes on each of them. And y'all can either approve those or change them accordingly if y'all see fit.
Does the county or the city? Because it says Vander County has eighty votes.
Yeah, it's the city.
Okay.
This is done every year, I think. They get reelected every year. And so, like I said, there's five seats and there's only four people running. So, they're all going to win, but they have to get votes in order to be included. If we put all of our votes onto one individual, then the other three, we would not be able to... Something about the process, they have to get votes from each organization or something, is what I was told.
Each tax entity is to nominate, submit their nominations to the board.
Yes, Lynn?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the twenty-two-six dash twenty-two-seven Board Directors Ballot for the Vandera Central Appraisal District.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Lynn Palmer, seconded by Jeff, to keep the votes, the twenty-two, twenty, twenty, and twenty. Is there any discussion on that? If not, all in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Question carries. E is approval of resolution twenty-two-five dash zero-three-seven and twenty-two-five dash zero-three-nine for the Glow Resilient Community Grant Application. Stephanie, would you like to step to the mic and give us a little bit of this information?
I sure will.
That you've been working on so hard?
Certainly been under a time crunch, please.
Yes, it has.
So, I will not bore you with reading the whole thing unless that's what you want, seeing as it was in the packet. I will clarify a couple of points that may not have been in here. The maximum award for this is three hundred thousand dollars. It is zero cost to the city. You do not have to do an in-time match or a cash match for this. It is a reimbursement program, so we have to follow all of the federal guidelines to make sure that we get reimbursed correctly, which is one of the reasons that we will need the grant administration company. So, whereas it says in the purpose for tonight that we are seeking to approve resolution two-zero-two-five dash zero-three-seven, which would give us the authority to apply for it, we also need to approve resolution two-zero-two-five dash zero-three-nine, which is selecting the grant administration firm.
Lynn?
So, can we go into a little bit about what this is all about? One of the things that I think is important is this program provides planning level grants to help cities strengthen hazard mitigation, flood, resi...
Resilience?
Resilience, I'm sorry, and community preparation. So, it's for floods and emergencies.
Any type of hazard that we encounter. We want to strengthen our hazard mitigation policies and policies.
Because we don't have one right now, is that correct?
No, that's not correct.
We have, we have something, but it's outdated.
It is outdated.
And it needs to be updated. And there's, there's more grants...
What specifically are you talking about?
That it needs to be updated.
What is it?
The Hazard Mitigation Plan, does the city? Yeah. That we need something new to address the situations with the new water flow that we have been told goes through the city, crosses over areas that did not cross over before in the past. There's just some things that need to be addressed. And this new plan, which this, whoever this company is that's going to be selected, would draw up a brand-new plan for the entire city, all hazards, not just flooding, but all hazards.
Does it include new flood maps as well?
We actually are, have updated the map according to the FEMA guidelines. The simple city went through a very extensive process to do that for us. It is going to include information that's from this map as well. So, it'll be one inclusive map. It'll show the hundred-year flood plain, the five-hundred-year, all of the areas as they are laid out here for zoning. That is currently with Vandera signs to be printed.
Oh, okay, good. Yes.
I have a question. I went and looked at their website. So, on their website, it says that the building codes must meet or exceed modern standards for IRC. You're saying IRC twenty-eighteen, they're saying twenty-twelve.
So, IRC twenty-eighteen is what we have currently adopted in NEC twenty-seventeen for electrical.
So, specifically, it's three hundred thousand, right?
Max.
Max. What, you said that you have RFPs out for this?
For the management, the grant administration management?
So, what did the RFP say? I mean, do you, I mean, we don't have a specific project selected per se, right?
So, the eligible activities are what are listed here.
Right.
And those are what, I mean, ultimately, it's up to you to decide what the money would go toward, but the administration firm will help us with that and also city engineers. Because they are actually, had approached Stan Farmer last year to sort of update some of his codes that we have.
Yes, Jeff?
This firm, is, what's the cost associated? Because it sounds like there's a lot of legwork to determine what we need, what's outdated, what we, whole slew of things that seems like there could be a lot of cost that possibly with engineering firms and this type of assessments can even be three hundred thousand dollars. So, what part of this three hundred thousand will be going towards them? And how much will we actually have left to do any of the things that we're doing?
Right. So, of the ones that were solicited, three responded. One of them came back with a fee of twenty thousand. The other two were at thirty-three. That comes from this grant.
So, minus twenty from three hundred, I can figure out.
Is that total all-in, forty-three?
Really?
Yeah. Gonna add on down the road?
No.
This is start to finish.
Start to finish.
And there's a deadline? Do I want to discuss that too?
We are under a deadline. This did not even come on my radar until the end of October. The deadline, as it states here in the program overview, is December thirty-first. That's when this program goes away. So, it's our first come, first served. We will request the maximum. If all funds have been extended by the time they get to us, there won't be any. We do not get the grant to do this and we may not even get the full three hundred thousand.
Yes, ma'am?
So, if the public wants to see what the eligible activities are, we have those right up there on the screen right now. That will, this grant will help cover.
Can you talk a little bit about what it would look like if we didn't try to update some of these? You know, because I believe we should chase grants any chance we get.
Right.
We don't have a lot of resources to do a lot of the things we need to do.
Especially ones that don't require...
But my question was the, how, I mean, okay, what, if we don't look into this now and find solutions, even if we don't get a grant, what's the repercussions from the state? Is there penalties if we're not up to a standard that they're now setting? Like, how does that, do you know anything about that?
No, I don't know. Jonathan T. Kattler said if we have questions that I can't answer, he is happy to get on the phone call with us right now and we can talk about some of those. One of the repercussions that I do know of is that there are federal grants that require us to have these minimum standards that we wouldn't even be able to apply for. We didn't have them.
I'll just second that, that's correct. There are certain state federal flow-through dollars that could get administered to the state, but if you don't have certain standards, you can't even apply for those grants.
So, we're gonna set ourselves up for future grants that are better, obviously, that's what you're saying.
Correct. Yeah, that we could apply for, that if we didn't do this, we wouldn't be able to, yeah.
This is taking a step forward.
Correct. It's definitely not backwards. Do y'all want to call Jonathan and ask him any questions, the engineer? Do y'all have any questions for him? Or are y'all comfortable going forward with this?
I'm with Jeff. I want to see the money used in actual projects.
Sure.
I don't want just a bunch of fluff.
These are pretty specific, so...
Yeah, well, they are, and they're, they are, but they're not. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that could go into each one of them. That's why I was asking about the...
Well, and I also think, again, taking a step forward, the three hundred thousand isn't gonna give us a whole lot to do much of this stuff anyways. I think it's a good, good start. And if it can set us up for future grants, because we don't even have the minimum, I mean, that's, that's pretty sad. And so, we don't even have the minimal requirements that are standard. That's kind of scary.
Yeah. So, I mean, these are for, these funds are for planning. They are not for construction project.
If the plan sets, so we know where to go from here, basically. Does that make sense?
And the, we have gone through the RFPs, because that resolution does have to be approved tonight if we're gonna go forward through this. And Wayne Ford's management was the one who came out with the highest scores.
You're talking about twenty-two-five dash zero-three-seven?
Zero-three-nine.
Three-nine.
Yeah. So, there's two different ones.
Three-sevens to apply.
I have actually hoped to have been able to put that off until the twelve-nine meeting so that we could have had more time and hopefully gotten more responses to score. But they informed us that this needs to be done tonight, so we're already gonna have to go through that process.
I am, I don't see an issue with it. I do see an issue with the resolution.
The thirty-seven or thirty-nine?
The thirty-seven line. But usually, in the bold, in the, can you bring that up, the resolution? All right, Jill? Up at the top, it says that we're authorizing the administrative assistant, which is you, Stephanie, right? To act as the city's executive officer and authorized representative. But then, down in section four, it states that we, where the mayor is the chief executive officer. So, I think that needs to be fixed before we sign it.
Yes, I will fix that. I will print another copy. I will change that.
So, who's gonna be in charge? You?
It would be me, yes. That's why that's, both places have said the mayor, that she's not always here to be able to take care of things in a more timely manner. So, I asked if it was appropriate that I could fulfill that role. And they said, yeah, many cities do that.
I would like that. I mean, I'm fine with that. I just want to be reported back to, so we know what's going on during the process.
Absolutely.
Yes, ma'am?
So, even though we need to make that correction, can we go ahead and approve the resolutions for...
You can, I would recommend motion and modifying that section to include that corrected language in the resolution.
Do you want to do that, then?
Um, yeah, I can do that. Okay, I make a motion that we approve resolution twenty-two-five dash zero-three-seven with a modification to... Our resolution, sorry.
No, just the first one.
The first one.
He's reading the first one.
Um, with a modification to section four, to mirror the language at the top of the resolution, does that work?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor to accept the resolution with the modification in section four to mirror what it says in the top of the resolution. Is there a second to that motion?
No, second.
Debbie made the motion, Jeff seconded. This is for resolution twenty-two-five dash zero-three-seven. Do y'all have any other questions? No? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, all in favor and none opposed? I'm not gonna sign now, because I chicken scratched all over it. Go down to twenty-two-five dash zero-three-nine. This is the resolution authorizing the selection of a professional service provider for the Community Development FLOC Grant Mitigation Resilient Communities Program administered by the General Land Office. Y'all reviewed this and you said it's gonna be Wayne Ford and Associates.
Well, I'll make a motion to discuss if we can do. I'll make a motion through a resolution zero, I mean, twenty-two-five dash zero-three-nine.
As the grant administration firm.
Okay, I've got Jeff with the motion. Is there a second to that motion? Lynn with the second. Any discussion on that? No? Okay, all in favor? All in favor, none opposed. Thanks, Stephanie.
Thank you, Stephanie.
You're very welcome. Thank you. I'm gonna stay here some days.
Yeah, you gotta stay there.
Yes, there you go. And now you can tell us all about the other grant.
So, we have had a request for a grant date, so I put together this spreadsheet, 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 cobbled from different sources, things that my predecessor had left behind in speaking with our grant administration firms and the city engineer. And so, these are the most current events that I have. Do you have any questions?
Oh, I have lots of them.
I'll answer as best I can, because I have not had much to do in preparing any of these.
Okay, so, the red grant, first one. I noticed that, I've asked several times when we went to the new firm if lighting was included in this and they said that they would...
Oh, she said she would get back.
Back, and I still haven't heard anything on that.
Okay, okay. I will ask her. I will get an update from Jessica. But she did say that last time.
Yeah, I've asked twice, two different occasions.
She did say in our last meeting that we had, Stephanie and I had a Zoom call with her and she did say she checked on it and lighting could be added, but it would have to be a change order.
Okay, well, thank you.
But she can get a writing from her. That was on a Zoom meeting.
Probably a good idea.
So, will this come, I mean, are all these projects slated in it? Or just these are the focus and we're gonna pick from that, or all, every single one of those?
All of those are included in the grant.
We can do all that for nine hundred thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Wow, okay. Okay, then the community, the community development, have we spent all of that, the second one?
So, all but sixty-one thousand dollars was spent, and so, they decided that that money could be used for the Indian Waters Booster Pumps.
So, we'll spend all of it then?
Yes.
Okay. And the last meeting on the FLOC grant? Everybody else just, I just, this is my hearing gear, my hard thing.
So, you requested it. You're the one that had all the questions.
So, last time we brought this up, Earl said he was going to work with the sheriff to verify the in, uh, entry-exit points. Have we defined those? And, yep?
Uh, yes, there's a map. Stephanie, can you not get the map?
Can we get it?
The map.
Can we get a copy of it?
If you want it right now, I can go print it right now.
Yeah, it shows the locations where the cameras are gonna be.
Can we, can you just send it to all the council? Jess, I found that, I'm sure, but I haven't seen it.
I haven't seen that yet.
But it still has to be approved by the state, right? Because isn't it all at the state level right now?
Yes. No, wait, we...
I just want to see where they are.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Then, the flood infrastructure project is my next one. That's supposed to start after the first of the year, right? Engineering's done?
They are, yeah, they are waiting the comments back from the plans. From the Texas Water Development Board.
All the surveying and all the stuff for it has already been done through ADRF. They're just waiting back for comments from Texas Water Development Board. All the surveying and all the stuff for it has already been done through Adura. They're just waiting back for comments from Texas Water Development Board.
Can we, I'm sure there's a map of the flow, or.
Yeah, we have that.
Can we get a copy of that as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Okay, then the drinking water revolving fund. Is that, that's approved? We've got the two point seven million?
Mm-hmm, these are all the, all the.
And do we have, like, where, a plan on where, I mean, I assume we have a plan on which lines, that that's going towards as well?
Well, yeah, there's plans on all of them. Because they've already gone through engineering and everything.
Yeah, these are currently.
Or does it hit most, I haven't seen the plans, so does it hit most of town, or just a certain area, or?
Well, it's, the line replacements are certain areas. The, uh, emergency generator is just for the Dallas plant.
Okay.
But, I mean, we can get you copies of it. It's come to council before, but we can give you copies of it. As I mean, it's a pretty big document, but, I mean, we don't mind emailing it out.
That would be great.
Yeah.
That'd be great. And then the last one that we just got.
Mm-hmm.
Which is great, which is the Texas, he grant, um. I know that you're going to put, start putting out solicitations in the paper for that as well.
Not, not quite yet. So, uh, like I said, it was just awarded on eleven seventeen. So I did speak with the, uh, engineering firm, Pete Dawson, who's been doing a lot of work on it already. I know, speaking of what the justice issues, uh, what the next steps are. So I had a phone call with him last Friday. So the very next step is that sometime within the next few weeks, Texas God will reach out to us to plan a kickoff meeting. And there will be, uh, an advanced funding agreement that has to be executed before any funds are available to be spent.
Okay, have we met with the business owners that are going to be affected by this?
I wasn't involved in this.
Or, can we? I guess the question is, I think we should. They should know what's coming.
I know that there were many letters of support from.
Yeah, I'm not saying, just so that, we, I'd like to see general meetings with business owners in general to get together and say, you know, what can we do to help you? But I think a lot of them don't know. They haven't seen the plans. I've talked to several. They, they're aware of the project, but they haven't seen the plans. So again, I think that's something that maybe we need to get out there, and so that they understand what's going on. It, it helps.
I agree with that. I think, now that it's, because it just got awarded seventeen.
Yeah.
I think it would be beneficial for the councilman and the community to know what the next steps are, whether, on the proposal, what we currently have planned, designed, refresh people's memory, and just kind of see where we're going now that we are officially awarded.
And I'd be more than happy to help with that.
I'm sorry. It's my understanding that, uh, the sidewalks along Main Street are going to be, uh, starting at Cedar on down. It's not going to be the first block of our historical district, so that that can be made clear to everybody as well.
It'd kind of difficult to do that without hurting some businesses in the process.
Yeah.
Well, it might coincide with the future development, you know, in that intersection.
Right, right. Well, that's, yeah, that's the Texas, they're, they're, yeah, you're right.
So, anyway, then on the ones that weren't awarded, do we know why we didn't get the LCRA community grant?
The, the reason that I listed here was the only information that they gave you back to, that I think basically what I'm reading between the lines is we asked for too much money.
Okay.
We asked for the full, they, they were doing, typically they are twenty-five thousand dollar grants.
Yeah.
But this was a special one that they were offering, was a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
And so we decided to go for the four hundred thousand to help out pay for the after, in the city park.
They needed that.
They do.
Yeah. So maybe we should next time go for that twenty-five to thirty.
They said we would have done well.
Yeah.
Probably even now.
Really? So when do they open again?
Next year.
Like in February, March, or not till the summer?
We did this one, that was in July.
Right. But I think they, I think they're open twice a year. I'm pretty sure that's what she told me, is that they have, uh, applications in, like, January or February, and then again in July. They do it twice, so.
Like a winter and a summer.
I think so. Pretty positive, so. But I think if we went for the lower amount, maybe we could at least get some of the work done, you know?
Okay. I've got a question.
You're out? No. You didn't ask about the, um, relocation of the wastewater treatment plant.
Well, I had a question on the notes. I guess I'll just, go ahead. Listed as pasta project, not sure if the cholesterol amount was requested.
Right, so, there was an amount that was on the spreadsheet that Susan had done for this thirteen million. And I don't know if that's the amount that we had requested from them, or if that was just going to be the amount of funds for the project that we needed. I don't know how much they requested.
Okay.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for Stephanie? Well, we got her up here. Tammy's?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, Stephanie. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Okay, uh, G, discussion impossible action, oh, on, yes, on resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero three eight to update the signature cards on all city bank accounts. We're going to have to go sign your license right now. You will now, as Mayor Proton, you will be, so.
So what I did was just remove Toni Battle, and I didn't fill anybody else new in until you all made a decision tonight. So I just need to update that if y'all agree that, uh, Deanna is what needs to be a signer.
Right.
Um, I'll just add her name, and then you can just approve it as is, but I'll add it, and then she can sign it after the meeting.
And that's in addition to what's already listed?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
All I did was remove Toni.
Yeah. So there will be one, two, three, four, five.
And is it just including myself?
Yes.
Yes. So it'd be McCabe, just Deanna McCabe, and C.
I've got it, yeah.
Okay.
This action for approval of the circle.
Yes, we need approval of resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero three eight to change the signature cards.
And adding Deanna McCabe.
Adding Deanna.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five zero thirty-eight. That includes the, that we had, um, newly appointed, uh, Mayor Burke to Indiana to the resolution, um, in order to move forward with signature.
Okay.
No second.
Okay, I've got Jeff with the motion, and Debbie with the second. Is there any discussion or questions on that? If not, all in favor? All in favor, none opposed. Um, H, uh, I don't know how to say this word, refu- refutation of incorrect information and clarification of facts regarding EDC-owned Buck Creek property. Uh, one of our EDC members asked for this to be on the agenda for clarification. Um, maybe you want to address the. Oh, Patricia, okay.
I'm Manny Longrum, currently the president of the EDC, and there's, uh, Patricia. She's the current treasurer at this time. We're, uh, refuting the, um, the letter of Laura Devonford's, uh, resignation from the EDC board, uh, based on, uh, certain facts that were, or certain comments that were made in the letter.
Real quick, I just want to say thank you for hearing us, council members. Really appreciate that. Um, I think that we need to keep our communications open and clear. That has been requested, and so therefore we are here to do this. Um, we are definitely here to refute and clarify the information presented and posted in the resignation letter. The EDC has not made any gift or sale of the properties located off of Buck Creek. We are in the brainstorming phase and working to come up with ideas that will put this property to work, earning taxes. It has been seven years and eight months that it has been owned by the EDC, and it is not working to the benefit of the city. Those taxes are not being brought in. So that is what we're in the process of doing. So just letting y'all know, if it had been here, it would have already come to city council. It has not been brought to city council. It has not made that vote. So I'm just letting y'all know, in the letter, it indicates that it was. It has not been. So I want to refute that, and I want to clarify it, and I want it on record, so that everybody knows where we stand, okay? There was a property that we would like to gift, but it is not Buck Creek, as is mentioned in this letter. Okay, so clarification please on that. I also think that, um, the funding of projects, it has been slow, because we were requested to look at how we fund it. We were asked to change our process possibly by the prior board member. We chose not to change that. But we have to have a quorum to approve these promotional figures and projects. We don't have a quorum on several of the meetings. We can't move any faster than a quorum is present. So we're sorry about that, but our hands are tied by that. The prior legal counsel firm, just so y'all know, that prior legal counsel firm was acquired and absorbed by another firm. That contract was with that specific legal counsel, not the one that absorbed, okay? So, therefore, we put out information requesting, let us know what you're going to charge us, what you're going to provide for us, all those things, to see where we would stand with the firm that absorbed, the prior firm, okay? Then we also inquired about the firm that we currently have, okay? Those inquiries were made. We were given those figures. Well, we got better figures. It's our job to do that. We got better figures. That's where it is. So, um, at this point, I would like to say for myself, I can't speak for many, but serving on the EDC board has been new and challenging. I'm used to being in business and making decisions, but government slows you down. You have to go through the process. We're doing our very best to go through the process. So we have very high hopes that from this point forward, that the EDC works closely and openly with the city council. And we continue to use the facts as the basis for our communication. It is time to make positive changes that allow us to look to each other in trust, to do what is right with the community of Bandyar in trust, not in accusation, but in trust. The facts are Buck Creek has not been moved from the EDC, period. What else you got?
What she said.
You were there just reading them. Okay, do y'all have any questions or comments? Jessica?
Um, I'm reading, I see what you have highlighted. I don't see in here where it says they actually gifted it to the Buck Creek property. What I see is it says gifting this property to the city keeps it off the tax rolls, which is factual.
It's already off the tax.
Well, I know, but I'm, we're refuting what's written, not what.
That is correct.
Um, so I, I would be more concerned with the potential violations of the Texas Open Meetings Act instead of refuting something that actually wasn't. I didn't get from that that it was given away. I just got that it was her hand, she, her opinion was the handling of Buck Creek property.
Which in my view should have been placed on the market to attract.
And she states in her view, which is her opinion, should generate jobs.
And should opinions enter into our conversation?
No. And again, this is a factual statement. It says gifting this property to the city keeps it off the tax rolls. Anyway, the, um, it was to refute that. I didn't know, I didn't see that she claimed that it was given to the EDC.
Anybody else?
Well, again, opinions are dangerous. That is an opinion that you have, or I have an opinion how I read it, so.
I mean, when I was at that EDC meeting, um, the one in September, I guess it was, um, where y'all mentioned selling or gifting or even leasing it to the city.
Mm-hmm. Brainstorm. We're trying to come up with ways to.
But I mean, I think that's just all, what she was trying to say here is that doing that to the city would not be a taxing.
I think the implications are clear that I'm trying to be factual and not talk about opinions. And the facts are, we did not do that with Buck Creek, period, end of story. When people read things like this, they often take them as fact. It is not fact. So this is my reputation and clarification. We did not do that with Buck Creek.
Oh, I know y'all didn't. I, but I don't think that's what the intent, I mean, that's, but.
Again, opinion.
But that's your opinion, too.
That's how you read it?
Yeah.
That's how I read it. And that's why it's dangerous. Facts are facts.
I mean, and then I know that y'all included the minutes from, yeah.
We included both September.
But hadn't, no, the October twenty-second. Hadn't she already?
I did September and October. She put her resignation in six minutes into our meeting. I read the email. I wasn't going to go there. I was trying to stay factual. That is factual. Six minutes into our meeting is when the email hit my inbox. So we did not have her here when we were brainstorming. So this was printed prior to an assumption of that we would do such. We did not. I think with trust moving forward, we need to be clear on the facts.
If we state the facts. Good.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification. I mean, Laura's served a long time. She's designed, uh, just move forward.
Absolutely. And Laura's done a great job. I just need things to be clear.
No, I, I, I agree. I think, you know, things are said, things are done, but it's clear, passion, and she's buying replacements and just move on. And I appreciate the transparency, and I hope we can continue that now.
Absolutely. Real, real quick, since Deanna brought up the Open Meeting Act thing, I do want to address that I was not going to do that because I didn't bring it up. But since you brought it to the front, I want to talk about that. I think that when we look to people in accusation, assuming that they're already talking about stuff, just because they're standing there talking, I think it's a real disservice to the people that you are supposed to be working with and for, and uplifting, and holding to, you know, a good place. Our community is supposed to be about liking each other, supporting each other. So rather than automatically assuming it's in violation of an open meeting, can you not just ask the questions? Can you not just find out what's going on, rather than making the assumption? I think it's important, and I understand that we have to be careful, but when people are leaving a meeting, you're naturally going to, to talk and say, have, you know, we do this. You don't have to scurry like rats because you're assuming that we're doing the wrong thing. I'm, I'm asking.
I, I don't, I don't.
I'm asking, is that part of the Open Meeting Act that we literally cannot talk to each other?
No, no.
No, no.
Okay.
So then why assume?
Well, I think what's infuriating is when something comes to the board. A motion's made, it's seconded, and there's no discussion. None. So, I mean, surely, surely there should be discussion. For order.
Agenda item was to refute the EDC property. And we can address anything else as a future agenda item?
That is correct, but you brought it down. So that opened the floor.
Okay, all right. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Okay, number five is closed session. The city council will meet in closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code section. Okay, number five is closed session. The city council will meet in closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five five one point zero seven one, consultations with attorney about the Main Street shop and loss. And B is, uh, five five one point zero seven two to deliver the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, and that is the wastewater treatment plant. So we are going to go into, we're going to close this one at six forty nine.